It is June 8th, 2021. It's a little after 9:00 AM. I'd now like to call this meeting to order and ask that you please rise for the invocation and bridge of allegiance from Councilmember Ms. Henigan.
Father, first we thank you for our many blessings and for blessing the city of Orange, Texas. And our prayer today, Father, is that you would give us the wisdom to honor those blessings. In these things, we pray in your son, Jesus Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible) to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Henigan. On to item three. Motion finding that the advanced posting and notice requirements of Article 8.1200 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Orange, Texas have been met in relation to all minutes and pending ordinances and resolutions on the agenda and that the reading of such items be confined to the captions as are agreed upon by the ordinances and resolutions. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, on to citizen comments. At this time, comments will be taken from the audience on any subject matter, whether or not that item is on the agenda. All comments are limited to a maximum of three minutes for each speaker. Your comments are appreciated. As the Texas Open Meetings Act does not allow the council to respond to items not listed on the agenda, your comments will be duly noted by the council and forwarded to the appropriate department for prompt consideration. A member of the audience that desires to speak during the city council's consideration of any specific agenda item is requested to notify city staff prior to the start of the meeting. At this time, there are no names on the city council's signing sheet, but is there anyone who would like to address the council? Okay, if not, we will close citizen comments and move to city announcements. Mr. Coombs?
Come on down. She's going to speak.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. My name is Katie Venable and I'm the children's librarian. Summer reading registration has begun for ages birth through kindergarten and first through sixth grade. This year, we'll do our programming. It will be virtual with craft and activity packets. They'll be picked up weekly and we'll have one in-person program this year. It will be held at the Riverside Pavilion and Gator Country will be coming to bring a variety of animals for the kids to learn about, see, and possibly even hold or pet. Also, we will have a story walk at the Limes Den Park and at Northway Park, and that will be where the children can walk along and read a book along the way, the path around, and be able to read the whole story. Any questions?
Maybe they can read the "Why the Crawfish Live in the Mud"?
Yes. Thank y'all very much.
Hey, thank you for, and thank you. And for those who may not know, the Orange Public Library has a book fair this week, all the way through Friday. So if you have a young one that is looking for some new Pokemon cards or all types of products, they're at the Orange Public Library. Okay? On to item six, consent agenda. April 27th, 2021, Orange Economic Development Corporation meeting minutes and May 25th, 2021, regular city council meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Burge, a second from Mrs. Salter. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay? Motion passes. On to item seven, A, ordinances. Consider an ordinance of the city council of the City of Orange, Texas amending the Orange Code of Ordinances Appendix A Fee Schedule, Article 10, Subdivision Fees, by adding Section 10.3 Minor Plat Filing Fee and Section 10.4 Replat Filing Fee, providing an effective date, repealing all ordinances in conflict with this ordinance, providing for a severability clause, and other matters. First reading was May 25th, 2021. Mr. Knopf?
Yes, sir. This is an ordinance that would establish fees for minor plats and also replats. And as we're getting more and more of those, then more of my time is being taken up with those, so...
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. On to item seven B. Consider an ordinance amending the City of Orange official zoning map, a part of Chapter 12, Planning and Zoning of the 2,000 Revised Code of Ordinances of the City of Orange, Texas, changing the zoning classification of lots 2, 3, and 4 of Delio Estate, also known as 1514 Donwood Drive, 1512 Donwood Drive, and 1510 Donwood Drive, all in Orange County, Texas, from R1 Low Density Residential Zoning District to R2 High Density Residential Zoning District, providing for the official zoning map of the City of Orange, Texas, to reflect such change, providing for an effective date, providing for a severability clause, repealing all ordinances in conflict with this ordinance to the extent of such conflict, and making certain findings relative thereto. Mr. Knopf?
Ron McAnally has requested to rezone three lots on Donwood Drive from R1 to R3. R1 is low-density residential and R3 is high-density residential. Last week, on June 1st, a public hearing was held with the city council and the Planning and Zoning Commission, at which point public comments were taken, and numerous citizens came and spoke against the rezoning request. And after the public hearing was closed, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously six to zero to recommend that the rezoning be denied. Now, more than 20% of the people within 300 feet of the property protested the rezoning, so therefore, under the city ordinances, if council desires to approve the rezoning, it will take six of you to vote in favor of it, because that's 75% as required by the Code of Ordinances for council approval, if 20% or more of the people within 300 feet oppose it. If you want to deny the rezoning, then you would just simply make a motion to deny the rezoning and then that would be the end of it.
I'll make a motion to deny the rezoning.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, the motion is denied. However, I would like for those in attendance to understand that council was in attendance for that meeting, to hear from the many residents in the area who spoke out against, and the information was given to Mr. Ron and his family that we still would like to encourage them to build and find a proper place in the City of Orange, because we never want to discourage development. We just want to help them find a proper situation that would benefit both the local community and them as new property builders. Okay? On to item eight A. Consider a resolution approving an EDC infrastructure grant agreement with Michael and Anna Smith at 3720 North 16th Street, Suite A, Orange, Texas. First reading was May 25th, 2021. Ms. Dallas?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. This is the last step in our EDC incentive grant. This is to approve the infrastructure grant agreement that you have all seen, and once this is approved, we will move forward. And once they get the certificate of occupancy for their expansion side, then we will move forward with those after all the permits are met.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Dallas. Item eight B. First reading, consider a resolution approving an EDC infrastructure grant agreement with Bayou Metals Specialties LLC, Treg Enterprises, 1813 Dupont Drive, Orange, Texas, in an amount not to exceed $150,000. Mr. Trahan?
Yes, sir. So this was discussed at the EDC meeting earlier this morning. It's just a minor revision in terms of the EDC infrastructure grant. Specifically, project owner Brian Treg was advised to form a new LLC in partnership with Bayou Metals Specialties. So in essence, we're just taking action to just revise the existing agreement to add Treg Enterprises LLC.
Okay?
I'll make a motion.
Sorry.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Trahan. On item nine A. Consider a motion to authorize the city manager to engage Behorkwiz Law Firm PC to review and make recommended updates to the City of Orange personnel policies and procedures. Mr. Coombs?
Mayor, Council, again, I appreciate you stumbling over that name. I can't say it either.
Yeah.
So, uh, thank you. But as y'all can, those of you think about the past year or so, you know, I brought some updated things in our personnel policy that needs updating, and I just think we need to take a look at the whole thing as a whole instead of just trying to piecemeal it. And so we, you know, called around and finally decided that, again, the law firm, who, they're also helping us redistricting, so we've worked with some before, we think it's going to cost about $7,000, again, to bring recommendations to us, to you, so that y'all would approve them at the end. You know, you think back in, you know, the last couple of years, seems like society as a whole is kind of evolving and changing. Some of our policies and our current personnel and policies, procedures have been around 30 years or so, so we just need to take a look at them and see. Again, they're not going to make a recommendation of something and just throwing out, for instance, oh, you should give this person three days off versus two days off for, you know, bereavement leave. They're not going to make that kind of thing, but saying, here's where the law has changed. Let's kind of update those kind of things. Maybe forms, procedure, something like that. Again, we'll bring those recommendations to y'all for approval.
Thank you for bringing this up. I think it's always great to make sure we're doing what's the best that we can for the employees and for city staff, so do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Coombs? Item nine B. Consider a motion approving action taken by the Orange City Council in approving the amended CBB venue rental policy changes for the Riverfront Boardwalk and Pavilion, City of Orange Boat Ramp, and Riverside Pavilion. Ms. Dallas?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. So some of the things that we wanted to bring to you today in the, I've just been calling this the all-inclusive rental policy, because we have combined the rental, let me back up. So, of course, we had the Riverfront Pavilion and the Boat Ramp that we were running out. Recently, we have had the addition of the Riverside Pavilion, and in discussion on, okay, do we want to have three different policies? There are quite a few people, and I will say myself is included, Riverfront, I mean Riverside, I mean Riverfront, and so we didn't want that to get confused. And so basically, what we came down to is having the policy that was presented in your agenda, and so if you had a chance to look over it, that's great. I just wanted to highlight a few things. For the sake of, again, streamlined policy, all the rules and regulations will be the same at each. A couple of things that vary, the electrical varies, which is outlined in the policy. The hours of use are the same within all of them. Want to be very clear that all of these venues, the Riverfront, Boardwalk and Pavilion, the Riverside Pavilion, and the Orange Boat Ramp are open to the public during the hours of use for free, at no charge. Anyone can go out there and enjoy them at any time. The only time that we obviously recommend a rental is when we are blocking, restricting access from the public for your specific event. And so, you know, if you say, oh, I'd love to go have a picnic with my family under the Riverside Pavilion, well, that's fine. You don't have to rent the Pavilion. You don't have to do anything like that. You don't have to let us know. But if there is ever a time that you're like, I would like to have a private family reunion. I don't want any outsiders to be able to come, that is the time that you would contact us 60 days in advance, at least 60 days in advance, so we can get the process rolling for everyone to rent it. Some fees that I would like to point out, again, are going to be across the board. It's going to be a $250 deposit with a $500 a day rental fee. Again, this is only if you are restricting access to the public, not if you are just going out there and, you know, you're having a picnic, you don't mind if somebody else is having a picnic, anything like that. There will be the same as it has always been, a million-dollar insurance policy with the City of Orange listed as additional insured. That is of right now. We've seen quite a few spikes of insurance recommendations, and so that may be something that we get legal advisement with and change in the future, but as of now, it is a million-dollar policies for rent, rental insurance for somebody to host an event, and of course, the security that is approved by Chief Lane and his staff, and any other rules and regulations. I'm sure you all have looked at it. I just wanted to highlight a few points.
Well, I'm happy that you explained it all the way, because that was one of the things that I have spoken about. When we first put this in, the Riverside Pavilion came from the bond issue. And so with that already being a slight increase to the taxpayers from several years ago, we wanted to make sure that we were not charging people extra, extra for a facility. But my main thing was, especially with the Riverside Pavilion, I wanted to make sure that people all over Orange, especially the east side of town, knew that this was available to them. So with you saying that no matter what, if you want to have an event, or I mean, if you want to go out there and hang out or do something with your family or even with your church, as long as you don't mind it not being completely shut off, it's free. But if you're trying to reserve the entire facility, close the gates, things like that, then you have to pay for it, and I understand that.
Yes, something that Hillary actually brought up yesterday, a good point was, if you're thinking, do I need to rent it or do I not? If this is something that you feel the need to advertise for, it might be something that you should consider renting, just because adding the rental insurance and adding the City of Orange as an additional insured is protecting you as well.
From being sued by someone breaking a leg?
Something hap-
Or something like that going on?
Yes.
Okay.
Could you tell the people what the city does from their standpoint when you say they pay this and then they have the whole entire place just to themselves? What does the city provide as far as for them to be inclusive? They lock the gates? I mean, what does the city do?
So, yes, so you will have to have security, which may be not necessarily a locked gate, but there will be security that is approved by Chief Lane. You will have use to the restrooms once they are complete, and we are not renting it out until everything is complete.
The security is not provided by the city, correct?
No. I'm sorry, that is additional.
That's right. But it's a requirement that's not provided?
It's a requirement, yes.
It's a requirement, okay.
Just like the train depot and stuff, too.
Yes, and that's probably pretty standard across the board, anywhere you would have to have security if it is a rented venue. So, and just to make it very clear, one thing that is changing, it is $250 deposit, $500 a day for private, for-profit, or nonprofit across the board. And this is because, as Mayor Spears pointed out, this was accepted through the bond, which was an increase. However, we can't allow people to use it for free, because if I said, hey, I'd like to book off the Riverside Pavilion for a month, because I kind of like there, you know, going out there on my lunch break, for free, you can't restrict the public access for that long for no cost. And so this just kind of holds accountability and, again, gets people to get the insurance, the security, the safety and liability and things like that. Yes, ma'am.
For those that actually go out there and they're just say, they don't really need it to reserve it?
Yes, ma'am.
Do they have access to the electricity as well? If I go, Paul's family goes, my family goes, and we just...
So we have discussed having the fans on during the summertime?
Right.
And depending on the hours of use, which is, the public hours of use is to 10, would those lights be turned on in the evening until 10?
Currently, no.
Well, yes, because we're, it's still under construction, and construction will continue. That's, that was accepted a few meetings ago for Jim to continue construction out there. Yes.
So will there be a calendar when it's rented that will be posted if a family, we're going to have a 50-person family reunion out there, they're expecting to go out there a certain day, and they find out the gates are locked and there's a vent there, they won't be able to go in? Is there a way that the citizens can see ahead of time it's not available that weekend?
Yes, so on our new website that Hillary has been working with Civic Plus on, we are working on a calendar that will not only hold or have our events, that obviously we would like people to know about, as well as days that the venues will be rented and what venue is rented, because there will be days. For instance, there is a day that I'm renting personally the Riverfront Pavilion, but there will be, I have nothing to do with the Riverside Pavilion, so that will specify.
Okay, thank you.
Me personally, on the east side, I would, you know, it's probably something we can't maybe afford to do, I'm not sure, but I would, I would personally like to see at least one of them not as costly on the east, on, over there off of Simmons. I get the Riverside and Riverfront mixed up, too.
Riverside is on Simmons.
So the Riverside. And the reason why is because I just feel like it would help those that are less fortunate, who may not be able to pay the same amount. At least they would have one of the Riverside front watersides that they could possibly rent. I know we do need to have them pay something. You have to be accountable when you are renting and using the facilities for the City of Orange, but $500, the $200 deposit, plus if it's private, you have to have security, so they have to pay for that.
And even insurance.
And the insurance, which may be run around $200, $300. So I just feel like if we could have something, because you and I, several of us may be able to do it, but there may be a family who would love to have the same opportunities as someone who does have the financial means to rent those places, to have something out there just for their children, just for their mother or father, so...
So are you referring to a, like, a private event, not something that they could host at a park or, because the Limes Den, Navy Park?
Yes, a private, a private event, at least on that side, especially due to the fact that at one time, you know, the mayor, we were all trying to look at something that really wasn't going to be costly. And I do understand they need to pay something, because they could, whoever rents it could possibly destroy something out there, and it'd be on the cost of the city. But to have a place at least for some of the people who are less fortunate, to be able to go out there and have something private, too. You know, I just feel like if it's some, just a little less, not this, you know, the $500.
Do you have a recommendation?
If it was $300 plus the $250 deposit, that's still $500 or something.
It's a refundable deposit as well. I don't know if I said that.
And I understand that.
As long as you're clean, uh...
The $250 is refundable. But at least maybe, maybe that side, maybe 300, because they might can't afford the one over here, because they always, you know, they still have to pay for the security, they still have to pay for the other things. So just to have a venue, just a little, little less.
And so the thing is, is with, I feel that way as well, because from the very beginning, the point was to try to make it as accessible as possible. Now, before this gets a little bit misconstrued, understand that the security is only if you have alcohol. If you're, you have a...
No, it's not. No, sir.
Why do you have to have a security person, just for any private event?
Yes.
I thought that was like for alcohol.
No, sir.
So that's just any private event?
Yes.
And that's over there as well, too?
And that's at every venue, but I would venture to say that's probably at any venue you rent out.
Yeah, that's my fault. Okay, okay, my bad. Because I always thought you had to get it when you had alcohol.
No, they're, I'm sorry.
If I may, that's a determination by the police chief, if that event, if he determines that that event may need security. So again, if somebody would rent one of those venues, and say they anticipate 10 people there, maybe they're having a picnic, something like that, so that's fine. Now, conversely, if they're going to have a couple of hundred people there, you know, they may, may say, we need to, need to have security there. So it kind of depends on the size of the event also, and the type of the event.
Yes.
So...
There's no charge for a large family event? There's no charge for...
If you're not renting, no, sir.
... several scout troops meeting out there and doing something. We're only talking about a commercial event, but there would be a charge like a small music festival?
Not necessarily commercial, so if, for example, and I'm just going to use this because this is something that I personally rent out the venue for, we, my family hosts an event each year for ALS Association of Texas, the Walk. I'm sure some of you are familiar. That is hosted at the Riverfront Pavilion, and it is a private event, because we are booking it, and we are restricting access. We pay and we have security and we have, you know, the parade route and all of the event insurance and things like that to host that ourselves. Nobody else would be allowed to, you know, walk out there and have a picnic in the middle of the lawn that day. But if maybe, we have committee meetings every two weeks, and so if we wanted to have a committee meeting down on the boardwalk, because it was a pretty day, we could go out there and we don't care if somebody's fishing or you're having a picnic and what it may be, we would not need to rent that.
Well, let's see, well, we ran a lot of discussion. We have a motion of anything?
I would like a motion to at least look at the river. Riverside.
Side, yes, that's on Simmons.
To at least decrease that amount for that, that...
And it's for that particular venue for, for, just, and I'm just being clear, so that's for private, nonprofit, and for-profit that you'd like to decrease the price on?
Yes, ma'am.
What, and how much?
Just 300?
300?
So, just that one?
So what, we'll have three different fees since you have three properties, you're going to have a lower fee for one, you'll need to include the fee of all three in the policy.
So you have to, okay.
Are you talking about just 300 across the board or just for that one?
Just that, just for that side.
So under the fees, we'd have to have three different line items for the fee for the, still the same security deposit, correct?
Yes. They need to have all of that deposit.
So our largest venue is going to be the cheapest to rent?
Right.
It defies logic.
What does, what does the profit go to? Which fund does it go to anyway?
Does it go back to the general?
To your own fund?
General fund?
Yes.
So it does not go, the rentals all go through the CBB, and Brandy Judy handles those as our CBB coordinator. We do not get that, it is not a for, that does not come back to the CBB. We only function off hotel occupancy tax.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to say, I want to keep it at the, at the prices that we've already established.
Well, currently, we have, we do have a motion, so...
We don't have a second, though, do we?
This, the motion is for the two venues to be 500 and Riverside to be 300.
Yes, sir.
And do we have a second?
I'll second it. So we have a motion and a second. Mr. Burge?
No.
Ms. Henigan?
No.
Ms. McKenna?
No.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
No.
So, we have a motion in a second. Mr. Burge?
No.
Ms. Henigan?
No.
Ms. McKenna?
No.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
No.
And Mr. Bailey?
No.
Okay, and then I would say aye as well, so that shot down. What's our next motion? The next motion was to keep it as?
Keep it as suggested.
Okay, I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Nay.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, and I'll say nay, but motion passes, so there we go. And that's the beauty of democracy, it works.
That's it.
All right. That's been the first time we've had one like that. I'm kind of excited.
So, sorry to be so controversial.
No, that's what this is all about, though. It's not going to always be everybody just agrees, that's not, it's good, I like that.
And again, just like you stated earlier, anybody can go out there anytime, it's free.
Right.
It's free.
From six to ten.
Yeah, from six to ten, yeah.
Is that what you said, six to ten?
Yes.
Six AM.
Yes, ma'am, six AM to ten PM, and that's just in accordance to all of the ordinance and sound ordinances and things like that put in place for residential neighbors.
Okay, nine C, thank you, Ms. Dallas.
Thank you.
Nine C, consider a motion appointing William Keith Longloy to the Citizens Advisory Committee for a term expiring June eighth, two thousand twenty-five. Ms. Monson?
Good morning. The Citizens Advisory Committee has, is made up of ten members. Currently, we only have eight positions filled. We would like to appoint Mr. Longloy to the Citizens Advisory Committee. The terms are four-year terms, so his term would expire on June the eighth, two thousand twenty-five.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
All right, and I'll say aye as well. Congratulations, Mr. Longloy.
And we still have one position open, so if you know anybody who might be interested, because they do help, you know, decide where our funding is going to go through CDBG.
Do I get with you for the recommendation?
They can fill out an application?
He want to hit you up on Facebook. Item nine D, consider a motion appointing William Keith Longloy to the Board of Adjustment as an alternate member for a term expiring December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. Mr. Knopf?
Yes, sir. Mr. Longloy has also applied as an alternate member to the Board of Adjustment, and we always need alternate members. There is no limit on the number of alternate members that can serve on the Board of Adjustment.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Please.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Congratulations again, and thank you, Mr. Longloy. Item nine E, consider impossible action regarding a request submitted by Expedition Properties Management LLC for the replant of part of Lot One into Track One B and Track Two B in the South Peewito Survey abstract number one fifty-four, and the SM Parish Survey abstract number two thirty-eight. Mr. Knopf?
This is a tract located out in the extraterritorial jurisdiction, so there is no zoning on this tract, and this is a large tract that they want to split into two almost equally even-sized tracts. The Planning and Zoning Commission discussed this last week, and they recommended unanimously six to zero that the city council approve.
Well, that's a good recommendation. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. City manager report?
The only report I have. Next week, I'm going to be on vacation. If y'all need something, call Jay.
All right. Okay, city council report, starting with Mr. Bailey?
Everybody fine.
All right. Mr. Childs, number four. Ms. Salter?
Well, I just want to say, thank you all for coming, and we're, Orange is moving in a great, great place. We're truly being blessed. There's an event that is actually going to be held June nineteenth, for Juneteenth, at the River.
Right.
Front, at the Riverfront, and I think it's from eleven to seven, held by several citizens that have come together to throw that. So, come out and celebrate Juneteenth. Thanks.
Okay. All right, Ms. McKenna?
Happy summer, everyone. Glad to see you here.
It's already hot.
Oh, no.
It is real hot.
Ms. Henigan?
No report.
Mr. Burge?
No report.
Okay, and I'll close, before we go to adjourn, before we adjourn to executive session,